Two questions have to come into mind. Are they put for the purpose? And we can bring in security experts and you can drill them with these questions, but two, two simple questions come to mind when you are trying to decide how many and how to design your system. One is, what is the purpose? Are you doing it for only deterrent purposes? If you're doing it for deterrent purposes only, then maybe you don't need that many cameras. But if you're doing it to find out where the person is going, then unfortunately, you do need that. So really, the question to the, to the board and to the community as you decide for yourselves and discuss for yourselves is what you, where, what you want to do. Jerry made it very clear that, that he believes that, and he's not wrong, he believes that deterrent is a very big factor. And that's really the motivator for Jerry's position as to doing simply like the Zurich, have eight, nine cameras, whatever number that is, to hit the key areas. But just keep in mind that we probably won't, maybe we will, maybe we won't recognize the person, but it doesn't answer the question if you choose, if you want a system to find out at where everybody's going, it won't address that. But it will address if you're looking to deter. So that's really a question for you guys to decide what you want for the system.
You just said where everybody's going. Who's the everybody in that?
Well, I'm sorry, where everybody's going. When something happens, somebody does something in the laundry room, or somebody breaks something, or whatever the case may be, we can see what door they go into, which apartment unit they go into. If they're going to break the camera, because a lot of people have said, yeah, but then they'll get broken. Okay, well, we'll see where they're coming, we'll see where they went to. So in order for them to break it and us not see who they are, they'd have to go and, and break the cameras right from the beginning, but remember, it's recorded, so we'll always see what door they came out of and where they went afterwards. So we can rewind it and we can fast forward it. So really, it's, it's a question of what you want the camera system to do. That's basically what it comes down to. Because you can use both systems here, it's just what do you want it to do?
Okay, I wanted to address one thing that Jerry said, that in his mind, the whole, we went through a humongous fine process, violation of fine process, I think it was like a year and a half ago. And he characterized it as unsuccessful because we didn't collect hardly anything in fines. My point of view on it, it was phenomenally successful. The purpose wasn't an income producing, it wasn't there to produce income, it was there to compel compliance. So we issued violations, we said, here, this, this resident here, you are doing, you're doing whatever the violation is, please fix it. And I believe it was well over 90% compliance. So it's a phenom, it was phenomenally successful. My own personal point of view is, we find, I guess it goes back to, I think people are fundamentally good and people want to do the right thing, most people do. Of course, there's always exceptions. So if we, if we see somebody mess up the laundry room, or, or do some, do something wrong in the mailroom, or, or break a, or do whatever they're doing, if we can find out what unit and they say, here, person, you did this, it's a violation, please stop. I believe the vast majority of them will stop. And, and all, and most of the nuisances that we are now having to deal with will decrease. And it's my point of view that without the ability to say, this is where they live, so we know who to address the letter to. You have to be able to address the letter saying, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, please, you did this, please don't do it again. So I believe that that ability will be successful in reducing all the crap that a lot of us have to deal with now. Another issue that was brought up, that the Zurich building may be producing less complaints than other buildings are. From my own personal experience, I, there have been countless times where I've gone into the laundry room and I've seen something just, you know, trash spilled, or whatever the problem is. Or I saw a problem in the mailroom, or I saw a problem in the front entrance. And I stopped complaining because I know there's virtually nothing management can do right now. Absolutely, there's just about zero they can do, so I stopped complaining. And I'm guessing from conversations I've had with other residents, that's a similar situation. They just see all this crap going on and they just, they just feel bad that nothing's being done and nothing can be done until we are able to say, this is where, this is the event, this is the person that did it, they live in there, we can now address that individual, that, that event. I'd like to have just one question, did you find anything that addresses that section 15?
Yes. Section 15 addresses it, but, addresses it, but it really, it, it's not using the language. This is the problem. So it's really not addressing it 100%. It's talking about architectural changes, or changes that, that would be, that would be done, can be approved by the board, but ratified by the board, but would have to be a majority vote. It's not saying material change. So I would have to have this reviewed because it's not saying anything about material change. So right now, the fact of material change, which means change of use, change of function, change of aesthetic, is not addressed in, in the language that I'm seeing, but I certainly can have it looked at, but it won't cost us anything to have it looked at. I can have it looked at for fruit from Dennis, and he will let, let us know if that, if we can fall under that.
Section 15 of what?
Of your decks, of your declaration of condominium.
This is the general fact, I'm not positive, but I have the impression that when something is not addressed in our docs, the statute prevails.
That's correct. The statute calls for a supermajority for a material change. Now remember, we're not calling this a material change because as we all agree, we don't know, we're just, you're, you're, you're looking into that right now. But if there is a material change and your docs are silent, it's a, it's a supermajority, which is 75%. But with that being said, there are a few things that are written in here, even though it's not talking about material changes, that I can have reviewed to see if there's a way we can fall under it.
Yeah, and I, I think there's also a monetary requirement.
It says 50,000 here in your docs.
Yeah.
I'd like to address Marvin's comment about him seeing problems in the Zurich, in the laundry room and in the mailroom, and just being discouraged and not reporting it. I don't know what that's supposed to, I don't know what that's supposed to tell us, other than he didn't follow through. I think that the way that I look at it is because Zurich did it on its own with its own money, we didn't have the backing of the management company and the security team, and we just did it, and like Marvin said, he saw problems and he saw it, but didn't do anything about it. I feel that the cameras that we have in the important areas, and maybe in a couple other areas, my, my proposal really is, I think we have good coverage with half the amount of cameras that are being proposed, 13 cameras. But the, really, the important thing is that because the whole association is going to be behind it, because their money is in it, and we have a management company here that is hardworking, that now these things are going to be followed up and they're not going to be ignored. Because Marvin is going around and seeing these things and ignoring them, of course, the person doing them figures there's nothing wrong with doing them. But if we do have the cameras in all the buildings and these things happen and they're reported, reported and followed up, that's a better test of whether the cameras work for deterrence or not, before we get into trying to find out where the people are going. So I, I think that it's a two-step process. If, I, I think we ought to put in the cameras to take care of the rooms that are constantly in question and the doors that are constantly in question. And if that doesn't bring things down to the level that we can live with, then we can get into checking the hallways and finding out where these people are going. Doesn't have to be done all at once, this type of system, there are individual cameras, they're bought separately, and they're put in place individually. So I can't see the purpose of jumping whole hog into 26 cameras just so that you know where the person is going. The person can be doing something wrong and then leaving out the front door. It doesn't mean they're going to go back to their unit after they do it. In any case, I would like to try to deter, and I do believe in cameras, I'd like to try to deter phase first and see if that does the trick for us. The other problem that I have, I always, I think about it, then I forget that quickly, but it'll come back. Thank you.
Jerry, how would you follow up?
I mean, I, for instance, I complained about what I saw in New Yorkshire this morning, but there's no way to follow up. Management sends somebody to clean up the room, and that costs us money, you know. You see our truck going through the property filled with lift, with discarded furniture and large boxes and this sort of thing. That's very costly for us because the, the maintenance crew has so many other chores to do to give us service, and here they are being trash collectors. So if you don't know who the person is who is imposing this cost on us, how do you follow up? What do you do?
Francis, you have no cameras in New Yorkshire. Okay, so I don't know what you're talking about. There's no follow-up if there's no cameras.
Well, if we had a camera in the laundry room, okay?
Right, then you would see, hopefully, who did it.
And how would you recognize that person?
By looking at his face and what he's wearing, and if it was reported, as you say so quickly, it's very possible that...
It would, I don't know when it happened.
Francis, I don't know how, I don't understand your question. There's no cameras in New Yorkshire. So I'm talking about, I'm talking about follow-up with cameras and with the recorder. That's what I'm talking about. So I don't think there's any...
Well, I understand Jerry, I'm not misunderstanding that, but let's say that there was a camera in New Yorkshire, okay? And I called and I, I reported what I found this morning. To begin with, you wouldn't know when the, the thing happened.
Yes, you would.
If you look at your tapes.
Yes, you would. You would know when it happens. These cameras are time-sensitive.
Okay, and you, you see, you see whoever did it, okay? Male, female, couple, whatever. And you say you're supposed to be able to recognize them from that?
Well, Francis, hopefully, it's not going to be 100%, we realize that, but you know their clothing, you see their, their, what they look like, and depending on how quickly you discover it, there's a possibility you could, but if you don't, I don't see, if they're, if they're doing something wrong on their way to work, all they're doing is walking out the door. They're not even going back to the room.
They might be doing it in the middle of the night.
Pardon?
They could have been doing it anytime.
They could be, but I, all I'm saying is, in the first stage, is to check, you keep cameras in the areas that are abused the most, the mailroom, the, the doors, people coming in, and the laundry rooms and trash rooms. See how it works. If it doesn't work, you can always put more in, you know, but why would you go with all of them to determine exactly where somebody's going? I don't, I think that's, that could be a step, but I think it's a second step. It's not a first step. I think we ought to do it in stages, if we do it, it should be in stages, and see how it works.
Any other comments on the camera system itself from the board members? Any other comments on the approval process, whether it's through board action or membership approval?
I think that that ought to be, that's something that should be presented to the attorney with the documents, and then we would know. And if the attorneys feel that it needs to be by owners, then that's fine. If the attorney feels it doesn't have to be by owners, then that's fine. It's a question of what has to be. We don't want to be in a position after we do it, that someone complains and then potentially we have to take it out. That's, that's unacceptable. So we need this looked into carefully, and we need a, a legal opinion on it. I mean, we, we had a legal opinion during previous boards. What's the term that they used that allowed them to do whatever they wanted to do, you know? And they got away with it. What was the term, Marvin, do you remember? They got, we have a gentleman out here, no.
Murder?
No, 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 the name of the term. Anyway, they, they got, they had the board and a lawyer give them permission to do whatever they wanted. So, you know, I think we wouldn't, we, I forget what it is. Mr. Kaufman knows what I'm talking about. I think, could you, could you share that with us, Mr. Kaufman, what the board got? No? Okay, funny. All right, anyway, I think that's the approach, is to get a legal opinion of whether we need the vote of the owners, or whether the board can do it. And then with that, we could go forward. We need that, we need that.
So what you're saying, you would be satisfied with an opinion from our lawyer of whether or not the board has the authority to approve a system, or whether it has to be from the membership?
I think that's a good first step. That's a good first step. I mean, we already had legal opinions that have been overturned, okay? But I think that's certainly a first step to get something and then read it and see if it makes sense, okay? If it can make sense of legal opinions, and then go from there. If we feel that we're not comfortable with that, then we can always go with the DVPR. It sounds like Jason has something to say.
Yes, we've done that, we, we've gotten an opinion prior to, remember, the, the most recent DVPR ruling came out on October 21st, I believe, right? John?
It was the fifth.
Whatever it was, it was very, very recently. When we got our legal opinion, it was like six or seven days prior to that. And the legal opinion clearly stated that it was a board, if the board had the authority to install cameras, because that's basically how, how, how would people in South Florida have them? Because 75% you'd never get. However, after the DVPR ruling came out, and I, I sent him the DVPR ruling, the next day, he looked at the hearing, at the ruling, even though he believes it's not the same, he said it doesn't matter, it's there. He said, so, he believes that you have four, we have four courses of action. The first course of action, ignore it and do what you want to do, and he's not going to give that opinion. The second course of action is go and ask for a declaratory, a declaratory statement from the DVPR presenting a case to them saying why it's not a material change. Because he doesn't, and lawyers that I've spoken with do not believe that cameras are a material change. So because, so that everybody understands what a material change is, it's a change of function, use, and aesthetic. So if, and, and the recent DVPR ruling didn't even address the common, the material change, which was interesting because that's what constitutes whether you need a supermajority. So he said we should go, he would recommend probably going and getting a declaratory statement in advance. Because, or abandon it, or go for the 75%. He knows you're not going to get the 75%, he's not telling us to abandon it, doesn't think you should just do it. So the only option for him is, we should go for a declaratory statement.
From who?
From who?
The DVPR.
From the DVPR?
From the DVPR. Now, he doesn't like doing that, because he says, look, we're, we're going to go there, we're going to do that, and then what happens if they, if they give you what you don't want to hear? Now you're done. So if you are going to do it, you really need to have him present the case to them professionally, because you don't know how they're going to rule.
And that's...
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the difference. Asking for a declaratory judgment means you don't present any evidence, you just say...
You present evidence, you present your evidence.
You do. And what's the other thing? You bring a case, you say?
That's it, that's, 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 I don't know, I didn't mean to confuse you, that's, that's the, what he was recommending.
To ask for a declaratory...
To ask for a declaratory...
Then you say, if you do that and they turn you down, then you're...
Well, it's only, okay, it's only, it's not binding, because you're just getting a statement from them. What that does, even though it's not binding, but if somebody was to complain later on, you can always say, look, we did our due diligence, we came to the DVPR, and you told us it was your opinion that we can do it. So it helps you.
So you don't believe that we can find a lawyer that specializes in this stuff, okay? That can give us an opinion based on existing law?
He, yeah, he gave an opinion based on existing law. The problem is, when you have a brand-new ruling that comes out like that, it hurts and they can't, then, they're not going to give you a, an opinion so soon based on that. It's going to be difficult. Because this ruling, even though they all look at this ruling as...
Ridiculous.
Really, they, they do look at it as ridiculous, because they didn't, if you read it, it doesn't even address the, the term material change. So he still believes that it's a board authority. He says it, but will he put it in writing? Will any lawyer put it in writing in light of this case? It's going to be difficult, because they have to protect themselves. But they clearly verbally say, yeah, this, this doesn't make any sense, but it doesn't matter. That's what the ruling was, and they have to protect themselves. So, so really, you're in a, you're, you, you have a choice. You can get a legal opinion, I can ask him again to give us a legal opinion regard, of the ruling, and he just may say, well, in light of that ruling...
Because there's a second issue that, that was brought up, about the opinion of whether our section 15 addresses whether or not the, the board has the authority to...
Well, that's different. That I can bring to him now, I'm going to do that tomorrow morning.
Okay, because it's two separate issues.
Right.
I thought that's the one that we're dealing with, the immediate issue.
Oh, okay.
Because if we can, if, if our docs, if, if our docs give us a clear authority, then we can go along.
Well, this doesn't give you clear authority. What this does is it makes it a majority, not a supermajority. If the, if he agrees to this, then that means that you would need a majority, but not a supermajority.
And the question, to me, there's a dual question. It starts with, do our docs allow us, allow the board to make this decision? To me...
Okay, I, I understand your question, but that's not, the legal opinion, this is the bottom line, is this a material change? If the opinion is it's not a material change, the board has the authority. If it seems that you're, the whole reason why this is coming up is, it's been brought to the attention of the board and the community that it's believed this could be a material change. That's the issue, whether it's a material change or not a material change.
And we get, do you think we can get an opinion by the board meeting next week of whether or not this is a material change?
Yes. We already have that opinion. They will not commit about a material change in light of that DVPR rule. So therefore, you have two choices.
Who's the final arbiter? Who decides whether the change is material or it's not?
Well, the, the process is, you put them in, and, and people go to the DVPR to complain. It's arbitrated in the DVPR. The DVPR, you present your facts, the, the other side presents their facts, the arbitrator makes a ruling, it becomes a final order. After that, if you, if you choose, if, if you choose to do this, you can pull it out with your file trial de novo, which takes it out of the DVPR and into circuit court. If you put it in, into circuit court, it nullifies the ruling from the DVPR, and you have to present your case to a judge.
So the final arbiter, i- if push comes to shove, the final arbiter of this issue will be a court.
If you pull it out and you file for that, yes, you have the, you have the ability to do that.
Okay, to, if the DVPR rules and, in, in rules that the association can, can do this without a membership approval, if it's not challenged, and that's the final order, the association can do it.
Correct.
Okay. So now, one of the choices that we have is to, so the, the, it sounds to me that the opinion is, this is, this is not a material change, therefore, the, the board of directors has the authority to approve a camera system.
Assuming that it's not a material change, yes, the board has the...
Okay, so one or more unit owners do not like that, and, and they take the case to the DVPR. Doesn't cost them anything, they can do that, but now we have to defend. So it's going to cost us something to defend.
Sure.
Right, okay. So, and then we just have to go through the process of defending that action. So in a way, which is a better way for us to, to proceed? To go for a declaratory statement, saying upfront, yes, you're allowed to do it? Or do it and then defend if we're challenged?
I would, listen, knowing that there's rulings out there and knowing that they, people may do that, I can't tell you to, no, you should not do it, just do it. No, I don't agree, you should just do it.
No, we should not just put them in and hope for the best?
No, no. I, I, that's not, it wouldn't be my recommendation.
So what makes sense is to go for a declaratory statement.
Well, first, I think we should do what Jerry is recommending. Let's go to the, to the lawyer. Let me show him the docs first, let's see what we're dealing with. I'll show him the docs, well, I'll talk to him about the two issues that we talked about tonight. I'll have him put this in writing for us, both. I'll get you two. I'll get you one that talks about this, and then one that talks about material change.
Okay.
And if this is a material change or not, and what he recommends we do. Is that what you'll, is that okay?
I, I have one question. Not sure I understood in the past what happened, but I remember that we had recently a request by an owner to put an independent at their cost camera in their unit, or outside their, in their door. And I remember, I think I remember, and that's why I'm asking for a clarification, I think part of that discussion indicated the board felt that that was a material change, and therefore, we needed to go through a whole procedure for that installation. Am I correct or incorrect?
No, you didn't ask if it was a material change, you just asked if you had the authority to approve it. So I did get a written opinion from the attorney saying you had the authority to do it, but we never talked about material change.
I thought, I thought it was put out there that that was a material change, and that's why the board had to act on it.
You know, I'll, I'll be honest, we can, we can review the tapes and look at them. I know that I got an opinion from the attorney whether the board had the approval to allow this one unit owner to put a small camera in front of their door, and he said yes.
Not, not, it had nothing to do with interior...
He never mentioned material change.
That's the reason.
Yeah.
Yeah. They got the camera, we want to do it, so we want to...
I was just wondering what the basis was. Was it that it was a material change, and that's why we got involved, and the, the owner couldn't do it with his own? You know, it had to go through the association? And my understanding, it had to go through the association was because it was a material change.
No, no.
I, I think the reason why...
I misunderstood.
Yeah, the reason why I went to the association is that the plan was to put a camera in common area.
Right.
That was the reason.
Right, and putting it in a common area made a material change.
Right.
No, because it's, it wasn't a change of function, use, or, function, use, or aesthetic, those are the three, because it's so small, it, it did...
I must have misunderstood, I thought that was it.
It's just like, your, the camera outside your unit is not a material change, it doesn't meet the three...
Good.
So I'm just, I instruct Jason to inquire from Dennis Isinger, get those two questions answered, and hopefully, we'll be able to deal with it rather quickly next Monday.
Yes, I'll do that first thing over.
Excellent. Any other comments from the board about safety, cameras, or security issues?